Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our last meeting of 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 3, 2019, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman, Ms. Fox, here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President and I do.
Here. Would you please -- oh, it’s the Pledge of Allegiance. I’ll lead us in the pledge. Okay. Everybody, rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory notice regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at rlicotis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. On to approval for minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session meetings of December 3 and the Capitol Budget Workshop of December 11?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I have it stand, please.
Thank you. Okay. Before going on to our reports, I’d like to ask everyone for a moment of silence because today we had the burial in Jersey City of Detective Officer Seals who gave his life in defense of folks here on an act of domestic terrorism. And we have people who are willing to sacrifice their lives for ours, and we need to respect that, and we need to honor that. So we share the sorrow with the folks in Jersey City, and we certainly share this immense sorrow that their family is going through right now. So if you’ll all take a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Moving on to reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. The Summit Police Department is participating in Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over, a year-end statewide crackdown on impaired driving that will take place -- that has started already from December 6 through January 1, 2020. The police will be conducting roving patrols to stop drivers who appear to be operating vehicles while impaired. We are committed to making Summit a safer community for all visitors, residents, and commuters. And drivers also should be very mindful always of avoiding driving while distracted by cellphones. During winter storms, of which we’ve had now three, please stay off the roads for all but essential trips. Do not push snow into the road. Treat your sidewalks and remove snow within 24 hours of the end of the storm. And if possible, please clear around the fire hydrants and clear a path for crews to access garbage cans. So we’ve got ice on our trees right now, and JCPL wants to remind our customers to immediately report any downed wires to the company or their local police department. Customers should never go near a downed power line, even if they think it’s no longer carrying electricity. And to report the downed wire, go to 1-888-LIGHTS, L-I-G-H-T-S-S. It’s absolutely much more efficient and better, even though it says on the press release to call them or the police department, it’s far more efficient to call JCPL. And Chief Wegg is nodding vigorously.
You can’t help but wave the words.
No, I know, but that’s what the press release says, so what can I say? And lastly, the Summit High School is hosting a very important session on January 7. It’s Teen Vaping: The Hard Truth, and this is for parents of children of all ages. It will be held at Summit High School, January 7 at 7:00 p.m., and the panel discussion will include Jessica Stewart, who is a coalition coordinator of an organization called Prevention Links, Dr. Gary Cohn, who’s a pediatric pulmonology and cardiopulmonology at some medical group, Patricia Ossim, the licensed professional counselor, our very own Sergeant Ryan Peters, who’s the juvenile officer for the Summit Police Department, Amy Herbert, who’s the high school student assistance counselor, and Sasha Hicks, who’s the middle school student assistance counselor. And the conversation will be about the current trends, the health risks, supports that are available, warning signs of use, and what parents can do. As you know from our last meeting, we had some young people from the middle school, and one of the things that they were talking about, this one group, was their worries, these eighth graders, their worries about vaping among their fellow classmates. So I think it’s something that’s important to go to. We’ll be publicizing it, and I’m glad that the police and that the schools are getting involved in giving this information to parents. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On to our report from our city administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I’m going to grant everyone an early holiday gift and not bore you with an administrative report, but I do want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a safe and festive holiday season and a healthy new year. We’re entering a new decade. It would be exciting what we have to contend with and face over the next 10 years. But it’s always a good time to reflect on what we previously done the last year, and I’m once again very proud of city staff, and I want to thank them for their efforts throughout 2019, and thank everyone on the council and the mayor for the great things we’ve accomplished this year, and I look forward to having another productive year in 2020. So thank you, everybody, and I’ll see you next year.
Thank you. Well, you’re still with us the rest of the evening. Can’t leave us right now. And I will skip having a council president’s report. On to public comments. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak about a topic that’s not on the agenda? Okay. Going once, going twice, sold. Okay. Moving on, we’re going to go through -- we don’t have any presentations, we don’t have any ordinances, which is not surprising because this is the last meeting. We’re going to go on to resolutions. The first is safety. Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. The Resolution Number 6839 awards a bid for animal control services to Animal Control Solutions out of Flemington, New Jersey, for the cost of $4,000 per month, for a total of $48,000 per year. This is the same company that has been handling animal control for the city since 2016. Previously, the contract was for a monthly flat fee and then additional charges depending upon the scope of services provided. Moving forward, the $4,000 monthly fee is all-inclusive. I move this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, law and labor. Councilman Bowman’s not here, so Councilwoman Little gets to lead us off in the law and labor. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The first -- may I ask first, as a point of order, do we ask for public comments before we started the resolutions?
Open.
Open public comments?
No.
Not before the resolution.
You have to have a second.
But we usually ask for public comments that aren’t on matters of the agenda before we start our resolution.
He did.
I did, yeah.
Oh, we did. Okay. I missed that. I’m sorry. We were just seeing. Okay. I apologize. Thank you for clearing that point of order.
The city administrator was clearly distracting you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Just went right past that. Thank you. The first law and labor resolution is Number 6694, and it’s to authorize the execution of the Policeman’s Benevolent Association, or PBA, contract. This is a contract that the Law and Labor Committee has been working on in conjunction with the city administrator for a good part of a year. We’ve been -- had very amicable discussions and negotiations with the PBA. They’ve been very easy and good to work with. We obviously have tremendous respect for our police department, and we are happy that we’ve come to this resolution with the PBA for what we believe is a very good contract over the next four years. There are many details that I won’t go into now, but the basic outline is that there’s a two-and-a-quarter percent salary increase over the -- a COLA increase over the next four years, which is in line with other towns in the area, and in line with arbitration that has been settled recently. And there are another -- a number of other provisions that were agreed on between the parties that I think is going to lead to a good four years and a continued good relationship between the city and our wonderful police force. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, law and labor number two. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. Law and Labor Number Two is Number 6858, and this is a resolution calling for the establishment of a study commission to review the Open Public Records Act. As we know, this was a law that was signed and to effect back in 2001, 2002. Its intent was to -- was a benevolent one, to allow the public access to records. However, over the last few years, the number of requests has increased dramatically, over 200 last year, but over 600 this year, and has resulted in, so year-to-date, over 200 hours of administrative time from the city staff. So we are at a point where we agree with the intent of the act, but not the execution at this point, and this is a resolution asking the state legislature to establish a commission to study the Open Records Act and see whether improvements can be made in the execution. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Any comments or questions from members of council?
Mike? No. Thank you, Council President. No, I think this is long overdue. You know, while transparency in government is a great thing, you know, this is one of those things that I -- if -- I don’t think I’m wrong about this, is that the state has required municipalities to do all this, where they don’t require themselves to do it. And that just tells you right then and there that there’s something wrong with this -- the law that got passed, and it does need reforming. I know, Rosie, you spend countless hours doing this. We get stuff from real estate brokers who are looking for things. You know, it -- this is now -- we’re basically being, you know, we’re outsourced as a, you know, depository of public records where we’re doing work that we shouldn’t be doing, and it does need to be reformed. So I agree with this.
I agree with you completely. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, law and labor number three. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The final law and labor resolution is Number 6831, and pursuant to our closed-session discussion, this resolution is to authorize sick leave with pay for one of our DCS employees, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Capitol Projects. We have a series of them. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Capitol Projects Resolution Number One, 6889. This resolution authorizes the submission of the Sustainable Jersey Roots for Rivers Reforestation Grant Application, and the Environmental Commission is seeking $1,200 to plant 100 trees and shrubs along the Passaic River in three locations: municipal golf course, Chatham Road DPW garage, and the transfer station area. And the Environmental Commission will perform the planting, and there’s no match required. I move this resolution, and I thank the Environmental Commission for pursuing this grant.
I second it. Any comments or questions from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public? I think it’s a great idea, and part of it, of course, helps also with absorbing rainwater, trying to control how much flooding we have in these areas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Capitol Projects Number Two. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 6827. This authorizes the city to submit an application to New Jersey Transit on behalf of Summit Public Art for the placement of a mural on the abutment wall under the railroad bridge on Springfield Avenue. And this is the same location where the city installed a sidewalk under the rail bridge, and this area now receives a lot of pedestrian -- foot traffic, so a mural will make this area more attractive to pedestrians as well as drivers. And I think this is a great project, and we thank Summit Public Art for their work on this project. I move this resolution.
I second it. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Three. Oh, actually, four.
No, three. The numbers are off.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Wait, the numbers are off?
As in, three. It goes from one, two, four.
The numeric.
It’s 6841. You are at 6841.
6841, okay. And I’d like to bundle three, four, and five because they’re all change orders.
So 6841, 6644, 6852.
Correct. Yes. So we’re saving a lot of money. These resolutions authorize the city to -- authorize change orders for the Linden and Oakland Place Improvement Project, the Dorchester, Winchester, and Tanglewood Improvement Project, and the downtown roads improvement and beautification project. In total, it’s $213,791. A lot of this has to do with savings on materials. There were some additional sidewalks that were added, and there was some work done to eliminate materials to bring the price down. The other thing is, on the 6852, there was -- there was -- part of this project was decorative stamped roadway, which was supposed to match the decorative cobblestone stamped roadway for Beechwood Road. And so the roadway around the circle was not completed, and so that money is part of this change order. So I move these resolutions.
I second it. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 6840.
Okay. So this resolution authorizes the issuance of a new request for proposals for -- a request for proposals for the transport and marketing of recyclable materials from the recycling center at the transfer station. The first RFP did not receive any proposals, so DCS will be revising the document and readvertising on December 26. The current contract expires at the end of the year, and we will arrange for emergency pricing with our current contractor until we are able to award a new contract. Just as a clarification, in early 2020, we’ll be issuing an RFP for the curbside collection contract, so that comes due in -- at the end of June. So those are two different contracts. We have some challenges this year with our recycling contracts, so I would urge people, please, don’t think, “Oh, I can recycle it.” The best thing you can do is not consume it in the first place. And I move this resolution.
I second it. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. 6834.
Okay. This resolution requests an agreement with Union County for the installation of a rectangular rep-flashing beacon at the existing crosswalk at Union Place across Summit Avenue. Because Summit Avenue is a county road, we need to get approval from the county to do this installation. It’s a high pedestrian volume intersection, particularly in the morning and evening commuting hours, so this will be a big benefit as far as safety. The beacons will be funded by the Safe Streets to Transit Grant that we’ve already received, and I move this resolution.
I second it. Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Mike?
So that’s a wide intersection. Is this going to be where, you know, the crosswalk where most of the commuters walk across for the train?
I believe so, yes.
So rather than near where the diner is?
It’s the one by the train, correct, Paul?
It is. It’s the location by the train station.
Okay. Great. And so it’s just -- it’ll be flashing, just so people notice?
Right. So when they approach it, they could hit the button like they do with the other ones, and then it’ll flash, alert the vehicular drivers that someone’s in a crosswalk. It’ll stay on for a period of time. And this is -- this is a grant we received back in 2018, $400,000 grant. This will only be a portion of the grant. We will also be looking at other locations, Broad and Summit, and Union and Maple, for the same application.
Okay. Thank you.
Two crosswalks on -- I’m sorry, on Union and Maple, and the two crosswalks on Broad and Summit.
Okay. You know, Paul, one of the two things I’ve noticed, because I’ve been going across the crosswalk from the train station, across Broad Street, and then across Morris Avenue, both of which have these -- if you’re going on Elm, right? Both of them have these things. One, I’ve noticed that sometimes these things don’t go on, and I don’t -- and I know we had the same problem on the one in Norwood into Forest. Is there -- do these get serviced by a certain contractor? How is that servicing done?
The reason why they may be intermittent is they’re solar-powered.
The what?
Solar-powered. Solar-powered. So if you have a number of days where it’s cloudy and it’s rainy, they don’t receive the power that they need. And that’s few and far between. I also believe that there are times where folks don’t hit the button.
Absolutely. I’ve been standing there, and people -- and I said, “We need to hit the button.” So, no, when we stand here, it goes.
No, I’ve hit the button. I do know how to hit the button.
But a lot of people don’t.
I understand. I understand. I’m getting my experience, and I do know how to hit the button. So we can take that one off the table, to be fair.
All right. But I do want to share that publicly for folks that do not know to hit the button.
I did not know that because of the solar powering that maybe you could have days where then subsequently --
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense. The other thing is that when you hit that, a lot of times cars still don’t necessarily slow down or even make any recognition about it. And I was wondering, is it possible to put the striping around these places as -- there’s striping that’s done that’s more, you know, reflective, and -- because clearly the -- it’s still not registering. And so you get people -- see, the thing is, on the one hand, you get people who are thinking, “Okay, now I’ve got the light going with me, so I’m entitled to go walking because I’ve now given cars a signal that I’m here in the crosswalk.” The cars aren’t necessarily slowing, so you’re in a way, you know, getting this crazy situation. So can we look, when we’re doing this, also look at the striping or something else that gives really, you know, people a recognition that something’s going on here, slow down?
So -- and that’s a great question. The project that you just approved will include striping in those areas. You have to remember, they’re all crosswalk areas where the beacons are being placed. So that includes striping as well, so it’s thermoplastic reflective striping in that area. And we have to abide by the DOT regulations, whatever they are, as far as striping goes.
Yeah, because there is striping that is much more reflective, right? I mean, it almost lights up. You can -- there’s a bunch of them that can do that.
Right. That’s the thermoplastic versus the paint.
Right.
And we have gone over to mostly thermoplastic.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Before I ask the public? Okay. Any -- anyone from the public have any questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 6856. Councilwoman Fox.
Okay. So this resolution requests that the county prepare an agreement to permit traffic signal upgrades at the signalized intersection of Orchard Street and Morris Avenue, and that’s intended to improve traffic flow. The intersection is served by a city-maintained traffic signal, and improvements in this intersection will increase the level of service in all directions. It’s hoped that this change will assist in reducing the number of vehicles using Bryant Parkway as a cut-through to avoid this signal. I commend the Engineering Division for their efforts to address traffic safety and congestion in this area. I move this resolution.
I second it. Any comments or questions from members of council? Council President?
Yes. Thank you. The Police Department and Engineering Departments hosted a community meeting on Bryant Parkway in July. That was to discuss the ways that the city might address both the volume and the speed of cars on Bryant, especially during rush hours, because people are trying to avoid -- are using Bryant Parkway as a cut-through, trying to avoid the intersection at Orchard and Morris. So this is -- this signal change is the first step, and then from here, the city can begin exploring other engineering options on Bryant Parkway. So for those not here or watching at home, we’ll also be drafting an email update on this project as a follow-up to that meeting that was very well-attended in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, just to add on to Councilman Vartan’s comments, like, there was, you know, technology is a good thing, but it also can have unintended consequences, and Bryant Parkway, I think, is one of those victims of that. I mean, the volume of cars that go down that street now is incredible. It’s in the thousands per day. And a lot of that is because of this, you know? Computers send people different ways. They might not have gone in the past, and we have to adapt to that. So again, this is the first step of many that have been discussed, and, you know, we get it, that something has to change in that area, but we can’t start the bigger process until that signal sort of gets sorted out. So again, the people in that neighborhood, stay tuned, but this is -- things will start to change.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Anybody else? Any comments from the public? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. 6838. Councilwoman Fox.
That’s Capitol -- that’s Capitol Projects Nine?
Yes.
Okay. So pursuant to discussion at closed session, this resolution amends the membership of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to remove the Summit Area Development Corporation as a member. The SADC has not sent a representative to the Shade Tree Committee in recent years, so we -- this is just a housekeeping measure. I move this resolution.
I second it. Okay. Comments or questions from members of council?
I just want to say that while we’re removing a member of SADC from the Shade Tree Advisory, just because they’ve not been participating, we owe them a great debt of gratitude. They’ve been wonderfully generous to the city in providing trees on the green and a lot of service and help and assistance, and will continue to do so. So we -- I don’t want, for a moment, anyone out there to think that we don’t appreciate what everything SADC has done for the city, and will continue to do so.
And my understanding, actually, is the SADC is no longer going to be there, but instead of foundations going to be there.
Right. We talked about that at closed session.
Right.
Exactly.
And so it’s going to be a 501(c)(3) foundation, so there will be a way that the public can also help to donate towards the upkeeping of the green.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Capitol Projects Number 10, 6821.
Doing well. Pursuant to discussion at closed session, this resolution authorizes the city to execute Pursuant to discussion at closed session, this resolution authorizes the city to execute a conditional designation and escrow agreement with Broad Street West Managers One LLC, which is an entity comprised of L&amp;M Development Partners and Toll Brothers. This has been part of a very long process, and the city has approved redevelopment, redevelopment plan in May of 2019, and then went through a process of requests for qualifications. We had meetings with 13 developers, and after many discussions and reviews of proposals, we have selected Broad Street West Managers as the developer whose proposal most closely aligns with the city's redevelopment plan and our goals of creating place and preserving, sort of working with the downtown rather than, you know, causing it, coming in conflict with the downtown, and just creating a neighborhood, really. So the next step will be for the parties to negotiate a redevelopment agreement, setting forth all the detailed terms and conditions for the acquisition of city properties and within the redevelopment area, and also the overall redevelopment of the project site and based on the proposal. So as part of this agreement, Broad Street West will pay the reasonable costs and fees incurred by the city associated with the negotiation of this agreement. And this is a very exciting step for us. It's been a long time in coming, and the Steering Committee has worked very hard. I thank them. I thank the developers who've just walked in, I believe. And I move this resolution.
And I happily second it.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Oh, Mike? Oh, no. Sorry, Beth, I didn't see.
I just, I just wanted to add my voice to Marjorie's. I think all of us on the dais are very excited to move forward and to have this conditional designation. We are all very impressed with the presentation put forward by the developers, and we are really eager to kind of get this moving and continue to work with you and, you know, move forward on this project, which is going to be highly beneficial to the city, and I think it's going to be a great partnership.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I would just echo what Councilwoman Little and Fox said. This has been a long process, and we've had a lot of milestones along the way, but three or four years since we started this whole thing. So it's, I'm forgetting now, but, but it's, it's really great to get to this stage, and it's great to get to this stage to be as excited as we are just to move forward. We interviewed and engaged with quite a few developers. New Jersey's got some fantastic ones, and we think we got the best team for our, for our project. And it wasn't easy, loads and loads of hours spent by many people, not just on the dais here, but members of the community, members of the planning board, and, but it's worth the effort because we want to have a great, not a good project for Summit, a great project for Summit. And we have to put the time and the effort in. So again, this is a big milestone. I look forward to hearing a lot of other great milestones going forward, and I know there will be some, so.
Thank you, Mike. Let me add also that I agree, of course, with everything my colleagues have said, but also let me try to address, in case those of you are watching at home wondering the timing of this and saying, well, you know, this is kind of the end of the year, why are you guys doing this now? Why don't you wait? And, and it's absolutely true that we have spent a lot of time, and I think we've told the public as well, this is a long journey that we are on. This is part of that journey. We did not want to lose time over the break, and then we get a reorg meeting, and then we have to come back. So we're talking really at the, towards the latter part of January, which is then having a month basically go by and nothing happen, when we did in fact reach an agreement with the developers who, as, as Councilwoman Fox said, are here in, with us. But now we go on, and we have to negotiate a redevelopment agreement, and once we do that and we have ideas of what this is going to look like, we will come back out to the public. The public will see what it is that's being proposed. The public will give us their feedback, and then we will have a better sense of how things all develop out of it. But we, I certainly know that folks have spent a lot, a lot of time behind the scenes, and we thank all the people who volunteered and have helped us out, and we thank our city staff, as well as our city administrator, our planners, and our legal counsel who have gotten us to the place that we have tonight. So with that, I'll open up for public comments, in case there are folks from the public who have any comments. Anyone else on council have any comments? Going once, going twice, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, finance. And now we have a series from Councilwoman Little. Finance Number One.
Thank you, Council President. So my first finance resolution is number 6849, and that is to authorize annual salaries. And this is to authorize us to continue to pay salaries for city employees, which is a good thing. And this is at the same rate as the 2019 salary ordinance for all non-union employees, including any anniversary increases that are due on January 1st, and the salaries that have been negotiated through the various collective bargaining agreements. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it. Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Number Two, Finance. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. Council President, this is Finance Resolution Number Two, which is 6851, and this is to authorize the transfer of appropriations. This is one of a series of resolutions that occurs in the last two months of the fiscal year and the first three months of the next fiscal year, where we take balances and surpluses that are occurring in certain accounts and transfer them to accounts where there are insufficient funds. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Rosie told me, and yet I forgot. We have to do a roll call on this. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, Finance Number Three.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Number Three is number 6850, and this is to authorize December transfer of appropriation, and this allows the city treasurer to make appropriation transfers to cover any bills that require payment before the end of the year. And I ask that we approve this resolution. By roll call vote.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. Second, okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thank you. Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, Finance Number Four.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Number Four is to authorize the 2020 legal services in excess of $17,500 for the services of our city solicitor. And we are asking council to approve, once again, the services of Cleary, Jacoby, Alferi, and Jacobs, and the wonderful services of our city solicitor, Matt Jacoby and Rand Kavanaugh, who we greatly appreciate and are happy to have continue as, in their wonderful service as our city solicitor. And I happily ask that we approve this resolution.
Okay, second, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance Number Five.
Thank you, Council President. Similarly, Council, Finance Resolution Number Five is to authorize 2020 legal services in excess of $17,500 for labor counsel, and we are happy to also appoint Matt Jacoby of Cleary, Jacoby, Alferi, Jacobs as our, also as our labor counsel. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second, okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Finance Number Six, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Number Six is to authorize professional service agreement in excess of $17,500 for legal services, not Matt Jacoby, but for our tax appeal counsel. And this is to continue the services of Martin Allen and his firm is, I just lost it, De Francesco Bateman, Kuntzman, Davis, Lair, and Flauem. So we will continue with their services as they do a terrific job as our tax appeal counsel, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Finance Number Seven, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This Finance Resolution is to authorize professional services agreement in excess of $17,500. This is for our 2020 risk management consultant services. In 2018, we hired Accra Shore to be our risk management consultants. They have done a terrific job and have offered a much higher level of service to the city than our previous risk managers had done for the same percentage of the JIF premium as we were paying before. So we are happy to continue this relationship and, again, appoint Accra Shore as our risk management consultants, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Last, Finance. Finance Number Eight, Councilwoman Little.
The final Finance Resolution is to authorize the shared service agreement with the Borough of Madison. This is an agreement we have with Madison for our information technology support services, a total not to exceed $95,880. There's a small increase over last year of 2%, but this has been a very good relationship and, you know, good use of a shared service between two municipalities, and I ask that we also approve this resolution.
Second, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments?
But even when we have disagreed on what those best interests may be, I have always appreciated how civil and respectful those discussions are and where everyone comes from. They come from a good place, and it's, and as Councilwoman Fox said, next thing, we're talking about something where we are 100% on board for the next thing, and that's special. I know some of our professionals who work with us, a lot of times they comment, I can't believe how your council meetings go. And again, I think that's a compliment to everybody who is up here and who has sat up here. So thanks for, thanks for making this job easy. I'd also like to thank all the wonderful volunteers I've worked with on various boards throughout the city. I always say that, you know, they are one of the things that makes Summit great. It's a fantastic asset, and it has been an amazing fringe benefit for being a councilperson that you get to meet a lot of people in town that you've never met before. You think you live here for a long, long time, you know everybody, but it's just not the case. And it's really nice to meet new people who have a passion and a dedication to this city as well. So thank you for all those people I've gotten to meet. And then finally, I just, overall for people, I, you know, I want to say thanks to people of Summit who entrusted me to be up here. It's an honor, and I really have felt that way. It's been an honor to, to serve people here in Summit. And then lastly, I wouldn't be able to go home if I didn't thank my family for allowing me to do this, especially my wife, Julie.